Good evening and welcome to the Franklin Township Board of Education meeting. Today is Thursday, November 17th, 2022. Can I get a roll call, Mr. Banana, please?
Mr. Si?
Here.
Mr. Grippo?
Frozen.
Dr. Hopkins?
Present.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Maris?
Here.
Mr. Shabon? Ms. Singh?
Here.
Dr. Smith? Ms. La Court?
Here. And for the record, Sammy Shabon and Mike Smith let me know had a time that they would be unable to make this evening's meeting. Can you read the Open Public Meetings Act, please?
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law 1975, Chapter 231 Sunshine Law, copies of the public meeting notice were sent to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, the Star-Ledger, the Franklin Reporter, Tap into Franklin Township, Franklin Township Clerk Manager, District Schools Offices and Associations, PTO Presidents, and posted on the district website.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn to confidential?
So moved.
Nailed by Bill, seconded by Arteman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned to confidential to discuss confidential matters, including a special education settlement, student matters, an employee settlement, and a workers' compensation settlement. Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. And welcome back. We were in a confidential session discussing confidential matters, which included a special education settlement, student matters, an employee settlement, and a workers' compensation settlement. Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Bill, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Thank you. Bill, would you also read the mission statement, please?
Mission Statement of the Franklin Township Public Schools. Franklin Township Public Schools embraces its diversity, forces excellent educational innovation, and empowers all students to achieve their highest potential.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda tabling A14, a special education settlement, until next month?
So moved.
Moved by Arteman, seconded by Nishida. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're on to our student representative report. Mary? Okay, so now we are going to go on to our recognition of some amazing people, our SGS-HSC players, who are all volunteers. And Bill, since you were like, were Mr. Sampson, why don't you read this? The resolution.
So this is a resolution that we're going to pass this evening of the SGS-HSC players' volunteers. Whereas the Franklin Township Board of Education wishes to express its appreciation and gratitude for the following volunteers for their years of dedicated service to students' performances at SGS Sampson G. Smith School. Their efforts in the past have built a legacy that continues today for the students at both Sampson G. Smith and Hamilton campuses of Franklin Middle School. Therefore, be it resolved that the Franklin Township Board of Education formally recognizes the volunteers listed on Exhibit 3.
Thank you. Can I get a second on that motion? Nishida, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Congratulations. Now let's go shake your hands and thank you.
Presentation first, if that's okay. Welcome, everyone. Tonight, the Franklin Township Board of Education would like to take this opportunity to recognize some of the volunteers who have supported the SGS Theater Program, which has now grown into the SGS-HSC players. The efforts these early volunteers, some of whom still help out, has truly formed a legacy that continues today. So I will talk a bit about the program and then ask the driving force behind their productions, Ms. Terri Seggio, to come up and say a few words with her co-part, Mr. Connell. She will call the names of those being recognized. If you are here when your name is called, please come forward and receive your certificate. You can then greet the Board of Education members, and then when everyone is done, we can take a nice group photo, if that's okay. Once upon a time, some 17 years ago, the SGS Theater Program began. With no budget to speak of, but with the spirit of a few determined volunteers, their first production of Annie came to life. The following year, a few more volunteers came, and they stayed. More joined them because those who had come before made coming in on a Saturday to build a set piece, paint, or sew fun. And through this camaraderie, subsequent productions, as seen here, unfolded with incredible energy, beautiful costumes, and some very special effects. Volunteers were behind all of these and served a variety of roles. Terri has referred to the group as a village, the way it takes a village to raise a child. Her team raised a beautiful production. Small groups worked independently, and they pulled together in the end to create the final show. There were producers, T-shirt designers, stage manager, and crew, those in charge of tickets, refreshments, set construction, the playbill, props, costumes, kisses for the staff, and the cast bulletin board. One of the things that made these shows so special was that there were always two-fold casts, so that more students could participate. So some of those students have joined their parent volunteers and returned to help the next generation of the now SGS-HSC players. Bill Connell, who has been with the program for many years and who frequently stops by the BOE meeting, bringing pieces of the most recent set, said about the beginning of the group, "There were a lot of personal chemistry involved, but at its core, a strong start allowed parents to get engaged and to contribute." I would like to call Terri Seggio up now to say a few words and call the names of those the BOE will recognize tonight.
Okay, so first, I'd like to thank the Board of Education, past and present, for always supporting the arts in Franklin and our program at SGS from its inception, when we were a five-six model, which Bill Grippo started and was our wonderful principal at that time. It's been a privilege and a pleasure to teach and direct for the past 23 years. And I'd like to thank Bill for helping to get me this job 23 years ago. Thank you so much for hiring me. And after I finished directing at Connerly with Bill and we moved over to the intermediate school, which was the new Sampson G. Smith Intermediate Five-Six School, we wanted to continue that theater program. And at the time, you know, we really had, as Mary said, we didn't have any funding, but we had incredible support by our principal and parents that came over from Connerly Road. So when we came to SGS, we had three amazing parents that came over with us. Diane Carter, who's not here tonight, but CJ Carter is here, which is why Diane volunteered, so CJ's here with us tonight. Tracy Donaldson, who is here tonight, came over. And Jeff Maskel, Wave Jeff, came over from Connerly, and they were the three parents that helped to get this program started. We had two producers and a stage manager in Jeff. Tracy brought along Alvin Jowers, who has been with us since the beginning, and he did professional sound and for nothing at the time because his niece was in the show, he decided to do our sound system and didn't charge us anything for a while, which was really kind of him. And he's been with us till today. Also Nancy Bullen, a teacher at the time, was kind enough to paint the sets, the very minimal sets that we had, and so that first production of Annie began. We hoped that it would sell a lot of tickets, because the only way to have the next year's show was to actually have some revenue. So we were really lucky. We sold a lot of tickets, and so Cinderella became our second show, and we were able to put on a full-scale production. But again, we needed more volunteers. So along came Bill Connell, who everyone knows, and Bill has been with us, you know, throughout the entire process since that show. And the one thing he brought was this gorgeous Cinderella carriage made of foam. Never did I think you could do a prop piece made out of huge foam, but Bill showed us that he could, and he then stayed. After him, we had High School Musical, and Alyssa Chin, who we now know as our cardboard queen, came along for the ride, and again, being Bill's partner, stayed until the very end also. And then, High School Musical was a challenge because Bill and Ava Naj at the time, and a wonderful group of parents, helped to raise money to reinvent that auditorium, which had seats, as Bill always says, from the time of Lincoln. So we redid that auditorium, but with the supply chain issue, like we kind of have a little today, they told us that we couldn't have our seats, but our show was going to open. So Doreen Healy, all the way from Delaware, who's here today, was our producer, and she was like, oh, no, that we're going to have seats. And between her and Ava Naj, I don't know what they did, but we had seats and we opened our show. I still don't know what happened, but we did have a show that year. And High School Musical was our first show that we completely sold out. So we made a lot of revenue, and as you can see, from that point on, the SGS players were known, people came, and this program kind of grew a life of its own. So Mary told me I have to not speak long, and as you all know, I tend to do that sometimes, so I'm going to not now tell you about every single thing that has happened, but I am going to kind of fast-forward, and I'm going to say that today, Bill Connell and I had a conversation, and I said to Bill, "My biggest fear is sitting down and forgetting somebody." And I torture myself every time because I want to. I can't adequately say what is in my heart to all of the people each year that come out and with their children build this amazing thing. So I said to Bill, you know, "What do you think about that?" And he was like, "You know what? Just keep it and say what you have in your heart." So the past 17 years, as the SGS players and now the SGS-HSC players, is about an evolution of people and chemistry, to quote Bill. It's about parents loving and supporting their children's interests and giving back to the community in the process. And those of you who are here tonight, or the parents that could not be here, and we will say their names, because you have stayed for so many, many years, and if you didn't stay for many, many years, but were with us for the time that your children were here, the parents today that are here tonight went above and beyond what anybody would expect a parent to do for a program. I can't thank them enough for all that they've done. And every single parent that has come through this program, whether they baked a brownie or they spent four months with me, it's their time and their ability to bring their children each week that helped to add to the village and to this program's success. But without the people that are here tonight, who came from the very beginning, who came along the way and stayed, there are truly no words to adequately express the gratitude and love in my heart. So you are all the foundation of this program and the village that it was built on. Each of you created an inviting and fun space year after year for new parents to want to come and join us and together make the magic for the kids, because as Dr. Avalli says, "It's always right about the kids," and that's why we do it. So because of you, you helped your children grace the stage with their beautiful presence and their talent year after year. And for this, I am forever grateful for every one of you that have done so many wonderful things for me and the children in this program. So with that said, I will now call you up, and I might say a few things as you come up. So Bill, if you could join me and Mary? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So when we think about, as Mary put, and the following volunteers who started the "Once Upon a Time" by lending their time and talent to the SGS Theater Program and whose spirit still inspires us, to start us off, these are the people that, again, were with us from the very beginning. So Diane Carter is not here, but CJ, come on up, please, because your mom was an incredible producer. Diane also helped start the Alumni Association to give scholarships to seniors. Tracy Donaldson, again, a first producer, who also helped us start the Alumni Association to give scholarships to seniors in the performing arts. Go shake hands. Jeff Maskel, who was with us for 17 years as our wonderful, incredible stage manager. Alyssa Chin, 16 years with us and as a credible partner to Bill Connell with set construction. Doreen Healy, our third producer and the producer that had the most stress getting that auditorium opened. Alvin Jowers, again, with us from the beginning on our sound. I have to say Linda Stadler and Noel Piercy, who are not with us, but our dance teacher and our original musical director, spent a lot of time volunteering to get this program started. So give them a round of applause, even though they're not here tonight. Mary? Alex Stefaniac, working backstage with Jeff as our assistant stage manager and doing anything that was needed all these years. If you're here, please come up, Alex. Annie Heimberg did our makeup for many years. Brandy Evans worked on our parties, did an incredible job doing all of the cast parties. Claudine Galouli, blast from the past. Claudine was our first huge ticket mom, who had to deal with so many different issues as we were working on selling our tickets. Eddie Aiello, working backstage with Jeff, changing scenery and all of that. Vernon Escher, Vernon, one of the gang with our set building and construction, always there, always working so hard with Bill. Casey Patel, I know you're here, Casey, incredible producer for many years and getting us through so many things as we moved from a five-six school to a middle school. Lenise Owens, oh gosh, Lenise, working on costumes, sitting backstage, managing 80 kids, and always smiling. Perul Patel, another Perul, amazing producer, working many years as a producer, getting parents to come on, helping to put together our baskets after she finished producing, still supporting me now, listening to me. Rebecca Perron, again, another incredible producer, costumes, helping with, makeup helping with, bulletin board putting together, whatever she needed. I'll take a second so we get this. We're catching up? We had a flow going. Shall I sing "Another opening"? Okay. Little musical interlude. There you go, Dore. You go. Are we good? And Perul, should have been Perul Shaw. That's okay. We still love you, Perul. Occasionally, occasionally make a mistake. We got it? Okay, we're going to continue. Scott Glasson, let's see, Scott, you made a house fly. You fed me. You made electricity happen. We don't want to tell anybody about that. We won't tell anybody about that, thank God. But you worked for PSE &amp; G, so it was all good. Anything that was needed, and he came tonight, and he had a lot going on. So thank you, Scott. Ted Mandalakis couldn't be with us tonight, but Ted helped with our set construction and building that beautiful piano in Suzical and spending years backstage. Amy Rice, incredible on her costume sewing, creating, doing everything that we needed for many years and is now going to take over that role this year. So Amy will be around for years to come. Jeff Heimberg, also working backstage all the years alongside Annie, those years, and we really appreciate that. Kara Holzer started with us when we were a five-six school in the very beginning, working backstage, then took a little break, then came back for years as a parent, helper with everything, incredible producer over the last couple of years, getting us through COVID, producing shows through COVID, and now helping to segue this year our new producers. Dana LaSalva, 12-plus years being our costume coordinator, doing an amazing job, putting together crazy shows, 80 kids, sewing, pasting, cutting, and manning, and also organizing our costume closet, color coordinating it with incredible boxes that are labeled. Edwin Leong and Ann Leong, helping with ticket sales and anything was needed the years that they were here. George Wade, incredible on the years that you were here, George, working backstage and helping whatever was needed with set construction. So come on down, I know you're here. Kevin McCarthy, Kevin, working backstage and working on, helping with moving the scenery and whatever was needed. And during our COVID years, made sure that Susan was adequately fed and nourished and got her to rehearsals during a very crazy situation. Nancy Bullen, our incredible art teacher, painting our sets for years and years and years. We love you, Nancy. Pat Shea, stage crew, set building, you turned around, Pat was there, helping the boys with whatever was needed. Robin DiMiglio, our past producer, doing what was ever needed, producing our show. Thank you, Robin. Sean Chek, we want to acknowledge Sean for doing a great job as our custodian and doing whatever was needed, especially on set construction Saturdays. Tori Kowalski, spending many years doing our playbill. Tori, with her creative clicks and all these sometimes last-minute changes, always had a smile on her face and did the playbill for many, many years. Thank you, Tori. Anne Marie Hill, during those years, Anne Marie managed backstage kids. I don't know how Anne Marie did it, but she always had a smile on her face, and she did a great job helping whatever we needed. Bill Griffith doesn't even have a child in our -- doesn't even have a child in our school system, but came when Sandra started helping, and Bill Griffith loves it, and he just comes and he's part of that stage, you know, backstage building the set crew. Thank you, Bill. Chris Schwartz, again, doing whatever was needed, helping with set and pasting and crafts and whatever was needed on stage. Depeche Patel, painting over and over and over again at Bill's will, never not smiling, helping with set construction and in and out for many years. Emily Russinello, incredible artist. Emily, always there when you needed her to paint, to do whatever, and still continues on and on, painting our doors. Jackie Orell, helping with sound with Alvin and whatever was needed. Kim Silva, helping with props. Nick DiMiglio did a great job with our café on the years that he was here, helping with publicity also. Nick, he's all over the place and helps wherever you need him. Not that my husband wants to come up, but he's going to have to. My husband, Phil Seggio. Because we forget that we had two children that went to Franklin and a daughter who did theater, so he was a theater dad on those years and then supported me all of these years with whatever I needed so that I could be here. All right, Phil. Sabina Shea, Sabina's everywhere. Sabina's helping backstage props, smile on her face, whatever you need her to do, always helping. Another incredible producer, Susan McCarthy. Susan, again, her and Kara through COVID, getting a show done, and then continuing to help get our new producers for this year and all of the years that Susan had her boys and did whatever was needed. Willie Chang, our amazing photographer, did all of our photography for years and years and years, always helping with whatever we needed. Bill Grippo, we're going to recognize Bill, because if it wasn't for Bill, we would not have this program. Without his support as our principal. Come on down, Bill, and get your certificate. Clark Graham, again, early on, Clark did all of our sets with Bill. Doug Carnaval, incredible. Doug gave all of his time and talent to program our lights for over 10 years. Just did it because he was a parent and because he does this professionally. He came year after year and did all of our lighting design, hung the lights. Could not have done it without him. Ava Naj is not here tonight, but Ava was instrumental in getting our new auditorium off the ground and always supporting as a board member. Kathy Proctor, amazing, working with our café for many years, helping to get everything donated. Laura Moley, amazing on costumes, helping Amy and Dana, always coming back, helping Lenise. Laura was one of the crew. Nikki Tatum, Nikki was a parent, like I had children, Nikki had children here. Nikki helped wherever was needed with costumes, whatever we needed her to do. Ray Holzer, when Ray joined us, the set lit up like a light. And incredible, our jute box for Grease, incredible lighting for Frozen. We actually had it snow on stage. Elsa made lightning strikes, and that was all Ray designing and just volunteering a million hours to get all of those lighting done. So thank you, Ray. Sandra Garcia, when Nancy Bullen left, Sandra, she had to pick up that paintbrush and spent hundreds of hours working those sets and painting and doing whatever was needed. Thank you so much, Sandra. And then another incredible producer, Suzanne Wade, spent a lot of years helping and producing and making sure that everything ran smoothly, and we could not have done it without her. Charlotte is the rock behind Scott. Is that it, Charlotte? Charlotte, I do have to mention that even, you know, you were in and out and always around, and your love and support meant so much. So even though you sent him out on that set construction, we know you were out there. Yeah. I got everybody? Okay, all right, okay. And Jeff, I'm going to mention Patty, your wife, because you spent thousands of hours at our school, and she supported that, right? So we have to applaud Parry. I'm sorry. Okay, Nichelle? Okay. And where's Vernon? And is Nichelle here? And Nichelle Esser, because again, if Vernon spent a lot of hours, right, Nichelle, being at our school, so we want to give Nichelle a round of applause for supporting and always being there when we needed her also. And last but not least, my partner in crime, Bill Connell, you know. When the school bus shows up at a board meeting and the duck sits in front of Nancy, Nancy, you're so good with letting it sit there. And the texts come at 4:00 a.m. when he's up and I'm sleeping. You know, it takes a village to do this. It took a village to do this. I was lucky to man it, but when Bill came along and then all of you loved what Bill did, right, and you had fun, and he was kind and crazy and inventive, and then he brought on Alyssa Chin, who is his calm to the storm. And then she said, you know, hey, we can do it with cardboard, and we can, you know, do it different ways. And then she took all of you out into the cafeteria and gave you a paintbrush and glitter and everything else. So with the two of them and all of you and all of the parents that started this and the support of the Board of Ed and the support of all the principals and superintendents and everyone along the way of my 23 years in this district, I am so thankful and so grateful, and there's no words that could ever say how thankful I am for all that you've done. But I'm so happy that the Board has recognized you, and you've all come out. And we do this for the kids, and we did it for your kids, and you did it for your kids, and Phil and I did it for mine. And I tell my students each year that the greatest gift you can give anyone is to give back. And all of you are shining example to your children, because that's what you've done. You've showed them what community service looks like. You've shown them what giving with your heart looks like, and they will grow up, and they will go out, and they will do the same thing. And that's all we can hope, right? Because we just need a little kindness in the world, and that's what we have here. We have love and kindness, and it has been my greatest joy and pleasure to have worked with all of you. And I just want to thank everyone. So-- So that's it. Good night. Yep, that's it.
All right, folks, ready? We're gonna get a nice big picture here. Gonna have to squeeze in a little bit. And Ms. Seggio, before we take the picture, I just want you to take a look around and I want to thank you because look what you've built. It's amazing, right? It's amazing. And the shows, second to none, really, honestly. I can't, I remember eight years ago when I brought my wife to the first middle school show and we're walking out and she goes, I thought the high school was bigger. I said, honey, that's a middle school. Those are middle school kids. She goes, that's unbelievable. So you've done a great job. Thank you so much, Terry, and thank you all. On behalf of the board, just keep it up, keep doing what you do and, and thank you. Don't leave yet, don't leave yet. We have board comments. Let me, let me just finish, make some board comments on this, and then we'll do it right away.
So before you guys go, we really appreciate everything that you've done, everything you've done for the kids, everything that you've done for the community, all the joy that you've brought, it's like incredible. And all the hard work that you guys do, it all really shows and, you know, like a week before Thanksgiving, it's appropriate, like to say thank you to a group of people that make us always want to say thank you and applaud. So the next production of the SGS HSC will be The Wiz sometime in February. So if you're listening, you can't miss our shows because this is where talent is bred. So Bill, I'm sure you want to say something.
Of course. Terry, come up here, stand over there by that podium there, just come on up here, it's front and center. So ladies and gentlemen, it's, it's been quite a journey. For me, in Franklin Township, as you know, one of the milestones, I'd have to say, of 44 years was probably the day I met Terry Seggio. She was cooking a spaghetti dinner at Elizabeth Avenue School and she was a parent. And then I asked her what she did for a living. She said, well, I was a teacher in Staten Island, something like that. And, and I said, well, would you like to be a teacher here? She goes, yeah, I think so. And I said, what do you, what's your specialty or like, what do you like? She goes, well, I like theater. I said, well, I'm principal over at Connolly, why don't you apply and come over there? And she came there and we started a theater group there. And then Superintendent Bill Westfield had this idea of sending me to Sampson for the first intermediate school, which I didn't want to do, it was too much work. But anyway, he, he sent me there and we built this phenomenal community. I see Nancy Bullen here, the first art teacher, and this great community and Terry gravitated to the new theater. It wasn't a new theater then, Abraham Lincoln sat on those seats that were in that theater. But she gravitated to that theater and wanted to build a production company for the intermediate school at Sampson. So I, kind of being an arts administrator, I jumped right on with her and we came up with a logo for the school. And Linda Smith was a parent, she created the logo, which was Reach for the Stars. But we had no idea when we said Reach for the Stars, that Terry Seggio and you, the parent community, would build a community of stars of students. Terry was a beacon for this program, is a beacon, was a beacon for this program. Terry was a role model for hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of kids that I witnessed from the first show to, to the end. But besides the magic of working with the kids, Terry was able to build you, the community. I mean, this is unheard of, to bring parents together from 17 years of productions and you're like a family. It doesn't happen all the time. This is a real blessing in Franklin Township, what has happened. During that time, we realized that the theater was really, it was ridiculous. The lighting cage at the time was called Old Sparky. And I mean, you literally, you get electrocuted if you went back there. And the curtains were tattered, the seats were wooden, they were, you'd get splinters in your behind if you moved the wrong way. And we renovated that whole theater because of Terry's vision of what could happen, even to the point of her saying, I want a middle aisle. See, theater was three sections. She said, well, if we have a middle aisle, the kids can work the aisle, right? How many times have you seen the kids, well, that was all Terry's vision. So this is, this is a blessing for Franklin and we are honored tonight to have you here as a board. I mean, I'm a little awkward, you know, I was, I was over there with you, now I'm over here. But the thing is, it's, it's a phenomenal journey for all of us. So Terry, I stand and salute you with the rest of this group.
You can take a bow.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much for joining us. We're so proud of you people and your pride words. It's been my honor and privilege.
You're about to make me cry, Terry, so. Mary, do you have the student?
Uh, I'll be there. Anybody know?
This is so nice that you guys are all staying. This is like the most people we've had at a board meeting without somebody complaining about something, so this is awesome. And we have cupcakes in the back.
This is taking a really long time.
I'm sorry, you know what? We're gonna like go through it really fast.
You guys could stay for the rest of the night, but just save me one cupcake because these guys ate everything before I got to it, so.
I'm sorry, Nancy, she's not on the line.
Okay. No, presentation. Oh, you're leaving? This is the good part.
We're waiting on some drinks.
Okay. It's the Somerset Diner, that's like the afterplay.
Otherwise, we'll be taking the breakfast.
Yeah. Dan, there's food.
Thank you for tuning in to this screencast.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to our New Jersey graduation proficiency assessment
Thank you for tuning in to this screencast presentation regarding the NJGPA.
I'll take it. So last, last month, we had the larger presentation of in-house results, state results, so forth and so on, that can be viewed online. These results came in after the presentation, it was a few days after actually, so we wanted to include them. And in, in short, this was a field test, meaning the state piloted the test, but it did not count. So this was a graduation exit exam that is similar to exit exams that we've had in the past that the New Jersey Department of Education divorced itself from and moved away from a couple of years ago and moved to more end of course exams, but they've since then moved back to an end of, an exit exam, which would now become an 11th grade exam, similar to the 11th grade exam we once had. But because it's a field test, you know, we treat the results that way. It didn't count for anything other than to give us data to see how we stack up against the rest of the state, who also were selected to engage in the field test. So Dr. Logren did a screencast so that he could add it to the screencast that is online now, which I think he's done. And you're gonna see the results are consistent with the state, so it's pretty short because it's only on this particular exit exam. And I say press play.
What is the NJGPA of the New Jersey High School graduation assessment is a requirement for the classes actually of 2024 and 2025? Initially, it was going to be. Thank you for tuning in to this screencast presentation regarding the NJGPA results. What is the NJGPA of the New Jersey High School graduation assessment is a requirement for the classes actually of 2024 and 2025? Initially, it was going to be for 2023, in which grade 11 students took this assessment last spring. Governor Murphy, however, signed a new law in July after students had taken, taken the assessment and basically said, we could not count this assessment or any of the other traditional pathways, sort of against students who were otherwise on track to graduate. So there is no graduation assessment for the class of 2023. However, the assessment those students took in the spring of 2022 did provide us with helpful information because in 2024 and 2025, students will have to pass the assessment to graduate. So this, the results were designed to measure the extent to which students are graduation-ready in English language arts and mathematics. Readiness is reported separately for each content component and these components are aligned to grade 10 standards in ELA and to Algebra I and Geometry standards. So how did we do? Well, in this field assessment, it showed that our students who, again, are seniors this year, but were juniors last year, 39.5% of them were considered graduation-ready in ELA, whereas in the state, 39.4% of the students who took the assessment were considered graduation-ready. Similarly, in math, 48.1% of our students taking that assessment were shown at that time to be graduation-ready as compared to 49% at the state level. These following slides show how different groups of students performed on the assessment. And so does this one in terms of gender. This one looks at additional subgroup data. And then this takes a look at math, again, by race in this slide. By gender. Students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, English language learners. So what are our next steps? The classes of 2024 and 2025 will take the NJGPA in the spring of their junior year. So this, this spring, our juniors will take it and will count towards graduation in 2024. Current 11th and 10th graders who, based on state and internal assessments, may not be ready to demonstrate proficiency, have been enrolled in instructional lab support courses already. And if you'd like to know more information about the acceleration learning efforts in our schools, we've included a link on this presentation, which will be embedded on the website, that takes you to our presentation from October, which has additional information on how our different departments are addressing accelerated learning efforts. You also can click on these links to find out more information about this assessment and how to use the parent portal and also different guides for parents about various assessments, including this one. If you wish to contact academic supervisors with questions regarding math, English, English language arts, or any other content area, please click there. And also, if you'd like to know more about this assessment or any of the topics presented here, please reach out to me, dlackren@franklinboe.org. Thank you very much and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan. Does anyone have any questions, Dennis?
No, I'm good.
Lori?
No, thank you.
Walter?
Um, no, no question.
Nishida?
I have a quick question. So this is given in 11th grade for the next two years, that's the starting. What is considered the cutoff or what makes you graduate or not graduate? And what is the follow-up if somebody does not do well in the 11th grade?
State, state hasn't given that to us yet. They, they have determined a cutoff for that assessment, but right now, what they're saying is you gotta pass the assessment. And I'm sure when we get to that point, we'll hear more about what if somebody did not.
I can just share, if history repeats itself, last time we had an 11th grade exit exam, what would happen is you'll have your first shot at it early on as an 11th grader. If it repeats itself, you'll have it again. When we had HESPA, which was the old 11th grade exit exam, you had your first shot as an 11th grader in your fall of your 11th grade year. You had a second shot at it the spring of your 11th grade year and then you would have another shot at it again in the fall of your 12th grade year. And during that time, if you failed to be proficient in one subject or another, what would occur is you would enter into a supplemental course. So maybe instead of taking an elective, you would enter into a supplemental English course or you would enter into a supplemental skills-based, proficiency-based math course and in order to better prepare.
in order to better prepare yourself for the exam, and you would be at the sacrifice of an elective. That's how it was. And then all else failed. And again, they haven't said that this will be allowable, but all else failed. There would be a portfolio process where you could demonstrate skill absent the test and through a portfolio, which has been the process even with end-of-course exams. But they've not said that that will be a viable option. So you could, you know, right now, or previously in the old 11th grade test, the HESPA, you could have passed by passing the test, or you could have passed by completing a portfolio, demonstrating skills, and then having that portfolio evaluated at the state level, at which point then you would pass and be granted your diploma. But again, to Dan's point, because this was a field test, they've not, they, being the Department of Education, has not determined, you know, what will be next. I'm sure they're utilizing the data, just like we are, to determine what their steps should be. So we'll use it to better align our curricula. They'll use it to determine what do they have to do and what should they do going forward to provide opportunities for kids to move on. So I hope that answered your question.
Bill, do you have any questions?
Dan, how does this align with the fast start efforts?
The strong start assessment that they've given the last two falls were actually sort of superficial measures when compared to the state regular assessment that we've done historically, which we did in spring of 2022. So the NJSLA is the full range of standards. The start strong assessment was a smattering of important standards. It's hard to compare that really to anything. It's its own thing. A lot of districts don't have iReady or Lincoln, which we do. We have very good tools to measure our student's success on the standards. The start strong assessment was kind of providing that opportunity for districts that didn't have that. So we also had that, but, you know, this is similar to that. The state is really just learning what to make of how students did on these different standards. So our folks are looking at it, studying it, and doing our best to make sure that we maximize the opportunity to do much better on the next rollout of the assessment this coming spring.
Artiman, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you.
John, do you have anything you want to add? Okay. Now we're on to our superintendent's report.
First item, volunteers. I would just like to once again thank the many volunteers who helped to make our middle school musicals and before that, intermediate school musicals so successful. In fact, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the many volunteers that help support our programs throughout the district. In September, we honored a team of volunteers who helped make high school, our high school's project graduation a huge success every year. And this month, we honored a team of folks who helped make our middle school drama program spectacular. We plan to continue recognizing groups at various meetings throughout this school year, so I encourage all our faculty advisors and volunteer group leaders to contact Mrs. Mary Clark to discuss your group's participation in the board's efforts to recognize our volunteers this year. So again, if you've got a group, you're an advisor, you're a volunteer leader, we would like to make sure we're connecting with everybody. It's so important to support those folks who support our kids, and we want to make sure that we're inclusive of everybody. So please connect with Mary if you have one of those groups. Strategic planning. This evening, you'll notice on the agenda an item, appointing members to the board's Strategic Planning Ad-Hoc Committee. As we turn the corner and return to more normal operations, we've engaged Kane University to assist the district in developing a new multi-year strategic plan to guide the board's work as we move forward. A big part of developing a meaningful plan is to hear from as many stakeholders as possible. In the near future, the board's committee will work with Kane University staff to develop data gathering instruments that will provide a voice to all those who want one and those interested in contributing to the plan's development. Please stay tuned and be on the lookout for upcoming surveys, upcoming meetings that will serve as ways to gain that stakeholder input. And then what will happen is Kane University and the folks that gather that data will put it together and try and help us to identify where our priority goals should be, and then we'll craft a plan from that, present it. The board's committee will present it to the full board, hopefully by the end of the school year, and that will guide our work for the next couple of years. So because of the pandemic, our last strategic plan was near its end just as the pandemic was hitting. We put everything on hold in order to get through, and there were so many changes to teaching and learning during the last couple of years, that it made sense to put it on hold until we could return to something more normal, which we kind of feel like we're at right now, which means we're going to get back to engaging in this process and creating a new plan and updating our plan and doing the things necessary to help guide our work as we go forward. So looking forward to working with Kane University. First time we'll be doing this with Kane University. Last time, we used a consulting group, and it was an outside agency out of Pennsylvania. Kane University is now doing some of this work, and we're excited that we're going to have the opportunity to partner with them. So that's it for me, and that's it for us.
Thank you. So parent-teacher conferences are the week of November 28 through December 2. And our education support professional of the year, Wednesday of this past week was Educational Support Professional Recognition Day. Last month, we adopted a resolution recognizing the day and all the support professionals in our district. We just received word that one of our own Franklin Warriors has been named Education Support Professional for the '22-'23 school year by the Somerset County Education Association. Ms. Teresa Kamen, a paraprofessional at FHS, who has been with the district since February of 2017, assists the students with special needs in a variety of classrooms, and we are very proud of her. Franklin High School Fall Drama this year is The Bad Seed, a 1954 thriller about a seemingly perfect little girl who may not be as innocent as she appears. The shows are November 18, 19, and 20. And for more information and a link for ticket sales, it's available on the district website. And calling Warrior alumni. In the upcoming issue of the Franklin Times newsletter, there will be information about a video project the district has begun. We will be asking Franklin Warriors from the past to share their memories and their thoughts on what being a Franklin Warrior means to them. Stay tuned for more information. And congratulations to Artiman Singh, who just received her certificate from Cornell University for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion for HR. So congratulations, Artiman. And we have cupcakes in the back of the room. Artiman and I got. But we told Bill they were for his birthday, which apparently you celebrate for the entire year. So although his birthday was on the 7th. Walter had a major birthday, Sammy had a birthday, and my birthday is next week. But Bill, happy birthday, because it's all about you, Bill. And go get your cupcake.
Cupcakes are great.
Okay, good. The other thing is, what we've been doing is talking about what we are thankful for. So what's the best thing about Franklin? So Nishida, what's the best thing about Franklin?
What's best about Franklin? Well, we just acknowledged Terry Seggio and the village. That's fantastic about Franklin, that volunteers give and help each other raise another's child. Can I continue with the other stuff besides? Yeah. Okay. I wanted to congratulate, can I do that now? Yep. Congratulate Nancy, you, Artiman Singh, and Walter Jackson for being elected back to the board. I'm looking forward to working with you this year and making our schools even better. Wanted to welcome and congratulate Kelly for the position as the high school principal. And I'm very thankful that I have had the opportunity to work with the board for five years, which not only provides excellent educational opportunities, but amazing extracurriculars and fine arts. And I've said that in the past, that high school wasn't the easiest for me. And every day when I am sitting in on meetings, I feel like I want to be part of high school again. And last but not least, I wanted to wish everyone a happy, healthy, safe Thanksgiving.
It's beautiful. Thank you. Bill, what's so great about Franklin besides your birthday?
Well, no, besides me. But I really said a lot about Terry's group, and that sums it up. Our volunteers and the work they do in our town is just amazing. So right now, I would just suffice it to say, what we saw here tonight is what's great about Franklin.
Thank you. Dennis?
I'm going to just piggyback on what my other two colleagues said, that what we saw displayed tonight was great. In a sense that I'm a big opponent of, it takes a village to raise a child. And with the volunteers and the support that the volunteers gives to the community itself, without that, the village itself may be lacking resources that those individuals share with our kids. So tonight was a great display, and it just proves we are warrior strong.
Thank you. Lori?
I think to take it even a step further, it's the opportunities that we give our kids to show their gifts. You might think that a drama program is all about those that sing and dance and act. And I know firsthand, from my child's experience, that it's also about the lighting, and it's about the arts of painting the set, building the set, coming up with the costumes. There's a lot of opportunity for all of our kids to really find their niche and what will make them shine and what they're comfortable participating in and supporting each taught to support each other, that you're not always the one that needs to be the star, that it's just as important to support. And the next time, maybe then you're the star and your friend is supporting you. And that builds community, and that's very, very precious.
Thank you. Walter?
Okay, I'm going to piggyback off the piggyback, off the piggyback. But definitely, this was a great opportunity to recognize the SGC players. My daughter had an opportunity to be a part of a few of those productions. And I mean, those are some serious Broadway productions. I mean, the price that they sell those tickets for, I would pay $100 to go see one of these plays because they're that good. And I could see the growth in Chloe in terms of her enjoying and appreciating the arts and being a part of those productions and the camaraderie with her classmates and the staff and everybody who's working the scene. And she's constantly acting. So it has put a serious fire in her to continue to do the work. She loves it, and I'm glad that our district had opportunities where she was able to shine. So I love this district. I'm glad that we took the opportunity to move here, and I would tell anybody that I run into that Franklin is where it's at. Thank you.
Thank you. Artiman?
So I want to share the same stuff. My boys went through the theater program at SGS, and they were excellent memories. I volunteered when they were part of that. I even sold kisses at the recession, you know, when recess happened during in-between, I was there volunteering. And it's the volunteering of the Warriors that, you know, brings us on the board here. It's the volunteers that makes Franklin. And since it's Thanksgiving, I also want to be thankful and grateful and express my gratitude. Thank you for recognizing me for the certification that I did, but that was because of Franklin. The DEI work that we are doing in Franklin, the two sessions the board had with Lenee Stevenson at Johns Hopkins, that's what encouraged me to go ahead and get the certification. So I accomplished that, and I'm thankful for Franklin for that.
Thank you. I'm going to take it in a completely different direction because I love volunteers, and we are all volunteers. But I'm going to thank, I'm thankful for our administration because we forget about them sometimes. The work doesn't end, obviously, at 5 o'clock. The work that they take home, the phone calls, the staying with the kids and just making sure that they're safe and that they know they have somebody to go to, somebody to ask them what is their why. It's not just the building administrators, it's also the people that are the liaison. So John and Brian and Dan and Orville and Jackie's and Mary. There are so many administrators that are there to help the board to do better business, to serve the children and to serve the community better. So I'm thankful that we have the relationship that we have, that we have people that are innovative and thinking outside of the box all of the time and thinking, how can I make Franklin better? And then doing it. So that's what I'm thankful for. And now, we are on to comments from the public. Can I get a motion to open public comment? Moved by Artiman, seconded by Nishida. All in favor? Opposed? Public comment is now open, and I see Councilmember Petosnick is with us.
Thank you, Petosnick, to Terhun Court. Just three quick things, maybe quick, who knows? One is, I noticed in the presentation that Dr. Logren set up there, it was kind of stood out that our English language learners didn't score well in English. So it reminds me that when you have a test, it's important to make sure that that test is testing the things that we value. And I think one of the things I'd say I'm thankful to Franklin is, embracing folks that don't speak English and bringing them in through the ESL programs or the bilingual programs that are happening within the district. So they could perform well in the mathematics session. If you compare those two slides, we see high performance there. And often, those mathematical questions are also asked in English. So they have to get through some understanding to understand the instructions, but still demonstrate the math performance. And, you know, with the high number of folks that we have that speak Mandarin or Spanish or other languages, that's something we embrace. We love our diversity, and those tests just like kind of get that snapshot. So that stood out to me. And I know we're doing lots of things to help bring folks that are, for the first time, learning English into the fold so that they can thrive here in our community. The second thing I wanted to mention is, I was really excited to see agenda item C7, which is the approval, hopefully, of the Health Professionals Academy. I know Dr. Ravalli and I have been talking for years about academies within the school or schools within the school. And many of you know this as well, that in the healthcare industry, there is there is quite a shortage of qualified people to take care of us when we're sick. And I think we saw that in COVID, the breakdown of our healthcare system. But it continues. It was a problem before. It's a problem post-COVID. If we even are post-COVID, it's hard to know. But it will be a problem into the future. And these are great paying jobs where folks can earn dual certification right in our school and get to work and providing for themselves and their families and taking their degrees to new heights. You know, nurses, healthcare professionals that are not doctors, sorry, Dr. Hopkins, are doing a lot of the work in our medical system. They are the front line and often sometimes correct. I'm seeing Nishida shake her head. Her husband's a doctor too, so I didn't mean to offend. But, you know, are often correcting doctors, especially when they're first out of med school or in their rotations. And I'm just so excited about that. And I want to congratulate you for taking the step to create two new classes in biology and chemistry that are specifically geared towards what you need to know in the practice of saving lives and keeping people healthy, extending longevity. So that's just awesome. And then the third thing is a point of personal privilege. I just want to thank the people of Franklin for doing the right thing and electing Walter Jackson, Nancy LaCorte, and Artiman Singh back to the school board with a decisive margin. I think, you know, one thing that impresses me a lot is the participation in the elections in schools and the school board are just such an important part of what happens in our community. And you guys have done an excellent job. You know you had my support. I consider all of you on the board friends, not only to the schools, friends to Franklin township, but for our young people, you've really been an inspiration. And I know in the campaign, a lot of stuff comes out. They say, people say a lot of stuff. But Franklin voters saw through all of that and did the right thing. And I just want to say thank you to them, to the community, and good luck to you to continue to do the difficult but important work at the school board. So thank you. Congrats. That's it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on agenda items only?
Seeing no one, I move to close the public session.
So second.
Motion to close public second by Bill, made by Bill, seconded by Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment on agenda items is now closed. And now we are on to our new business. Oh, I'm sorry. Our committee reports and our liaison reports. Let's just read those into the record because it's getting late. Okay? Like, put them, we're not gonna read them. Yeah.
So I would like to make a motion to move the following in new business. R1, monthly reports. M1, minutes of board meetings. A1, travel and related expense reimbursement. A2, affirm harassment, intimidation, and bullying decisions. A3, revision of district organizational chart. A4, district safety plan. A5, school business emergency exit drill report. A6, revised policy, second reading and adoption. A7, new policy, second reading and adoption. A8, revised policies, first reading. A9, FTPS revised safe return plan. A10, COVID-related protocol. A11, ad hoc strategies plan committee. A12, land easement. A13, facilities use. B1, warrants and payrolls. B2, financial reports. B3, contract approvals, A through M. B4, change orders. B5, supply chain assistance funding. B6, authorization to solicit contracts. B7, designation of positions. B8, disposal of equipment. B9, long-range facilities plan amendment. C1, out-of-district student school year 2022-2023. C2, field trip destinations. C3, field trip applications. C4, FHS and FMS winter athletic schedules. C5, preschool plan 2023-2024. C6, course proposal. C7, Health Professional Academy HPA revision. C8, memorandum of agreement. P1, salary allocations. P2, workman's compensation settlements. P3, settlement. P4, personnel report number five dated November 17, 2022. So once again, R1, M1, A1 through A13, B1 through B9, C1 through C8, and P1 through P4.
Can I get a second? Second. Nishida? Is there any discussion, Nishida? Questions, comments?
No, thank you.
Bill?
No.
Walter?
No.
Lori?
No questions. Thank you.
Dennis?
No questions.
Artiman? Okay. Brian, can you do roll call, please?
Mr. Si?
Yes.
Mr. Grippo?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Maris?
Yes.
Ms. Singh?
Yes to all, and I will be abstaining from A13A. And the reason for my abstaining is I am an employee of the YMCA, so I will not vote on that.
Thank you. Ms. LaCorte?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, great. And now I would like to call up the principal of Franklin High School, Nick Solomon, to introduce our new vice principal at Franklin High School, Kelly Guerrero.
Good evening, board, and thanks for a lovely meeting this evening. This evening, I'd like to introduce everyone to our new vice principal, Ms. Kelly Guerrero. Ms. Kelly Guerrero is a, was going to be a former teacher now at West New York High School. It's coming to us from there. She's a resident of North Bergen. She's a graduate of Rutgers University. And she was a phenomenal candidate. So without further ado, here is Ms. Kelly Guerrero.
Thank you to everyone who is present. It is an honor to join the Franklin School District and work alongside a dedicated team of professionals whose common goal is to maximize the potential of all students. I'm excited to support student learning and build strong partnerships with our student families and diverse community. Thank you once again for this incredible opportunity, and I look forward to collaborating with everyone to ensure our student success.
Welcome to Franklin.
Kelly, the first 10 years of my life were spent in West New York schools.
Okay, and now we are on to comments from the public. Five minutes per speaker on any topic. Can I get a motion to open public comment, please?
So moved.
Moved by Artiman, seconded by?
Second.
Walter, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment on any topic is now open. If you're on the phone, please press star 5 to get into the queue.
Anybody up?
No.
All right then.
Do you have any?
No.
Emails? Okay. All right, can I get a motion to close public comment seeing that there is nobody wanting to speak? Besides Bill?
Motion to close. Motion to close.
Second.
Motion by Nishida, seconded by Lori. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public comment is now closed. Now we're on to the good of the order. Walter, do you have anything for the good of the order?
Yeah, just real quick. As you all know, 'tis the season for grace and gratitude. We all have so much to be thankful for, but there are also a lot of people during this season. It gets pretty rough for them. So if you can just, you know, a lot of us aren't wearing masks, and you would be absolutely amazed of the difference you can make by sharing a smile with someone. So definitely during this season, pick up the phone, send a text, check on your friends and your family, ask them how they're doing. And let's continue to do the work that we're doing in Franklin. I want to thank my family, my friends, and Franklin for re-electing me and the rest of my amazing team back on the board. You saw through a lot of the mess, and you continue to allow your voice to put us back where we are. And we're gonna continue to do the work. We're excited about doing the work. We're passionate about doing the work. And you will see once again that you made the right choice. Kelly, congratulations. You are absolutely in an amazing district, and you will truly be welcome. Trust me, as soon as you get to the high school, everyone's gonna love you. So we're excited that you are enjoying this team. I also want to thank the administration, Dr. Ravalli and the rest of his team. It's, it wasn't until I got into this position that I really saw a lot of different parts. And there are some amazing parts behind the scene. Dr. Logren, Mary, Brian, Jackie, Jackie, that do some absolutely amazing work. And I know that they don't get the recognition that they should get. But at least during this Thanksgiving season, I want to personally thank them for all the work, all the support that they give us to do the job that Orville, that we do. So thank you.
Thank you, Walter. Lori?
I don't really have anything other than to wish everyone happy holidays and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Number one, congratulations to the three amigos, Walter, Artiman, and Nancy on your reelection to the board. Look forward in the continued work that we do here. We all, upon Thanksgiving, and some of the things that Walter shared with us, I'm gonna just expand on it just slightly in the sense of, yes, we got kids coming home from college. We got elderly out there in the community. It's a time to reflect and be thankful. That one of the things that I share with all my patients and all my loved ones, that every day that I wake up on this side, everything else is easy. And you have those who may be in a dark place. Wrap your arms around them, show them love, and let's just be thankful for just existing and sharing that thanks with others that may need the uplift. How about that, Nick? So, so yes, enjoy Thanksgiving and congratulations. And congratulation to you, Kelly. All right.
Thank you, Dennis. Nishida? What?
I said it before.
Okay. Bill? Do you have anything for the good of the order?
So real, real quick. First, I want to thank Alfred and Mary Clark. This is working pretty good. So it's enhancing the hearing. And Alfred, you could start a hearing business now. This is, this is great. I want to bring to your attention that Franklin Food Bank is overwhelmed with people coming these couple of weeks. I go in there a couple of hours a week, and it's just very moving to see the operation. Tomorrow, there's a community pickup in the morning from 8:00 until 1:00. So if you know anybody, they just have to ride in the parking lot, and the staff loads the car. They don't even have to go in. So that's tomorrow. So if you know somebody, Dr. Solomon, just, you know, pick up some parents you might know, announce it, put the word out there. That's good. And the other thing is that this past, last week in October, I really enjoyed my educational experience in Atlantic City with my colleagues. It was just a phenomenal time with President LaCorte and Vice President Singh. They just shined such an intellectual light on the experience. But it really was great training. And I'll be back. And Jackie, thanks for all your help, if you know what I mean. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, for that. Artiman, do you have anything?
I only have thank you and gratitude to everyone in Franklin, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
So I would like to also say thank you to the voters who elected Walter, Artiman, and myself back into office. We work hard because we're passionate about what we do, and we love Franklin, and we love the kids and the staff and the families and the community. I would also like to say that we did have our educational workshop in Atlantic City. It's New Jersey School Boards Association, where boards of education get their training. And we learned a lot in the classes, but it's an opportunity also for the board to bond together. And this year was kind of trying for me. I had a lot of stuff going on, but I've gotten to know my fellow board members in different ways. And I can't thank them enough because these are people I actually like working with. And I think together as a team, we all lift each other up and help each other grow to become better, better board members, a better community, better administrators. So I'm thankful for that. And with that, I would like to say that, I'm sorry, happy Thanksgiving. And please check with people who are suffering from food insecurity, and you might not even know who they are. And meetings adjourned.